All right, good afternoon or good evening. Welcome to our regular business meeting. We will have our invocation from Reverend David Cochran, Associate Minister of Travelers Rest, Missionary Baptist Church. And tomorrow will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from our Veteran of the Month. Is Mr. Andrews here?
Yes, sir.
All right. He will lead us in Pledge of Allegiance afterward. Please stand with me.
Shall we pray? Father God, we thank you for this day, oh God. We thank you for life, health, and strength. God, we thank you for bringing us to this place at this appointed time, oh God. We pray now that you cover every mind and every heart in this place, oh God, as they make the decisions and lead this county, oh God. We pray that your will be done above all else, oh God. Continue to bring us peace, continue to bring us joy. God, we thank you and we love you for these and our blessings. We ask in Jesus's name we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our November 5th, 2024 regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, Commissioner Hambrick.
Uh, yes. Number 13, Resolution 2024-255. We pull that for the regular agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's it. That's it.
I'd like to pull to the regular agenda. Ordinance 2024-253, that's number 12.
Are you clear on both of those, Madam Clerk? Yes, sir.
Any others? All right, here and done, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda. So move.
Second.
Is there a second? Those in favor, aye. Aye. Oppose. It is unanimous.
Next on the agenda, we have our presentation for our Veteran of the Month.
Our Veteran of the Month is retired Sergeant First Class Herman Drew Andrews. Sergeant First Class Herman Drew Andrews is a distinguished veteran who honorably served in the United States Army for 21 years, retiring at the rank of Sergeant First Class. His military journey began with basic training at Fort Knox, Kentucky, followed by advanced individual training at Fort Sam Houston, Texas, where he trained as a 91 Alpha Medical Specialist. He later advanced his medical expertise by becoming a 91 Charlie Licensed Practical Nurse. Throughout his career, SFC Andrews demonstrated exceptional leadership, completing various Army Leadership Development Courses, including the Primary Leadership Development Course, Basic Non-Commissioned Officer Course, Advanced Non-Commissioned Officer Course, and Instructor School. His expertise led him to instruct the Army's prestigious Practical Nurse Program. During his service, SFC Andrews participated in numerous humanitarian missions, providing healthcare and supporting community development in underdeveloped countries. His commendable service has been recognized with numerous awards, including the Meritorious Service Medal, three Army Commendation Medals, five Army Achievement Medals, six Army Good Conduct Medals, and that's just to name a few. Post-retirement, SFC Andrews has become a dedicated community organizer, advocating for expanded senior services, criminal justice reform, affordable housing, and the advancement of a living wage. He is also a staunch supporter of small businesses and entrepreneurs, helping to create financial and coaching opportunities for their growth. Currently, he serves as a trustee on the Clayton County Library Board and a board member for the Friends of Clayton County Court Appointed Special Advocates. SFC Andrews is a graduate of Wayland Baptist University with a Bachelor of Science in Healthcare Administration, an MBA in Marketing from Clark Atlanta University, and a Master of Public Administration from Clayton State University. He is a successful entrepreneur, serving as an advertising, marketing, and political consultant, and is a sought-after national speaker. A member of Tabernacle of Praise Church International in Jonesboro, SFC Andrews is also a proud member of Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity, Inc., the Urban League, and is the first male president of the Urban League of Greater Atlanta Guild. He is a loving father of four and a devoted grandfather of two. Please help me honor and recognize retired Sergeant First Class Herman Drew Andrews.
Um, I don't have family here, so the community is my family. So if you would... Oh. She know process better than you.
Now we can have whoever wants to.
All right. Hey, Chief Roberts. Hey, Chief Roberts. If you don't mind, Chief. And, uh...
Yes, sir. I'm super sure.
Yeah. Came up back. Or maybe I can dress everything up.
All right, I got all eyeballs.
Here we go. Three, two, three. Good. Again. And last time. All right.
Congratulations again.
Citizens will be given three minutes, maximum time limit, to speak before the board with a total time of 30 minutes. Comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting, and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency for the record, speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Teresa Tally.
Utility poles are used to support overhead power lines and various other public utilities such as electrical cable, fiber optic cable, transformers, and streetlights. They carry a high voltage. When did they become a holding place for people to promote their businesses? People are also using stop signs, yield signs, school signs, trees, whatever they could use, they're using zip locks to make sure the signs stay up. There is a Georgia law that governs this code, 32651. It's also unlawful to place anything on private property without consent. Why is this acceptable and allowed? These signs needs to be removed. This is another nuisance that the taxpayers have to deal with. Some of the signs are so high that people, they gotta be using a ladder because they putting up so high. How long would this take to undo this mess? Why do the residents have to endure all of this? For the signs that are up high in the trees and on the utility poles, it's an easy fix. Call the people who put them up there and tell them to take them down and let them know that they cannot display their businesses on these items. If they want to properly do their business, they need to purchase a billboard, a magnet, and put it on the side of their cars. But this is something that needs to be addressed ASAP. One other thing, I'm not sure if you all are aware, when will the Dfax Office on Battle Creek open? When you go on Google, it say it's open, but the Dfax Office been closed for a couple of months now. So it's asking us to go to Fayetteville or Henry County, and they can't help us. It's nobody to really talk to. I am asking that code enforcement pick up all of these signs, and I know it's a lot, but that the signs that are up on the utility poles, it's just not the place. Thank you.
And Ms. Tally, in reference to the Dfax, we provide the building, that's a state operated organization, so you have to get those answers in terms of how they're operating here in Clayton County from the state.
But, well, we have state representatives and state senators that we have that we elect that you can check with them.
Okay.
And also too, to the signage, Ward Nelson, last Friday, I've called and spoken to him about going out for that signage, picked up 148 signs. They also had them on the back of trucks pulling what they could off of the high posts. So they have done that, they're doing it every Friday now for about the next month, as well as he got the inmates out on Saturday as well. So that is being addressed and addressed aggressively at this moment.
And all of that is good, but if we are not communicating with the people that are putting the signs up, when they take them down, I don't think they gonna do it, put them back up and find a brand-new pole. So we gonna have to communicate with them to let them know this is not acceptable.
Yes, and also too, like a few of the vendors have said, I prefer to pay the fine. I'm not taking my signs down.
Okay.
Because they make more money off of them. So, I mean, understand it, but it's gonna be our job to clean it up.
All right.
Mickey Garber.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Speaking to the problem that Ms. Tally mentioned, speaking to Warden Nelson, and speaking to the effect Chief Roberts, who last commissioner meeting brought up how they were gonna deal with derelict properties. And let me say this, I'm in favor of the progress and what they're gonna do to try to correct the situation. Also, let me add about our letter in our county. The county is 41% rental properties and single-family homes. From everything that I understand, that these builders are gonna build single-family homes as strictly rental properties. This is happening not only in Fayetteville, Georgia, Fulton County, Georgia, but all around the country. Now, here's the thing that you need to do. You need to propose a law that if you have a rental property, that that person who owns the property provide the garbage service and not let it be dependent on the people that rent the property, because yes, they'll get the water turned on, the gas turned on, the electric turned on, but they, if they can't afford the garbage, it won't get turned on, it'll get turned out into our streets. Don't tell me you can't do this, you just have to have the will to do it. Are there any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
The board will now consider the consent agenda.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items? Here and done, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
Our next item is item number 12, Ordinance 2024-253, presented by our Chief Staff Attorney, Charles Reed.
Good evening. I'm Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair. Board members, ordinance 2024-253 is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia, as amended specifically Code of Clayton County, Georgia, Part 1, Chapter 90, entitled Taxation, to add Article 4 designated as the Community Improvement Tax Program, to provide for repeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide for codification, to provide for severalability, and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hambrick, are there any questions?
Uh, yes, I have one question.
Commissioner Davis.
Within the new ordinance that we took off and read introducing this evening, does that taxation level, after that property has come into compliance, go back to what the original was, consistent with all citizens in Clayton County, not minimized?
Yes.
For already rate?
So, based on the discussion from the board at the last time this was here, that there were two changes that were made to the ordinance that was presented before and what's presently here now. The first is to removal of the incentive portion where the property had a lesser tax rate, so now it just goes back to the same tax rate as everywhere else. And also, the second thing is it clarifies that the, and this is in Section 102, that the, this program only applies, it does not apply to owner-occupied dwelling houses.
Thank you.
And so I think those are the two things that the board had discussed, and that's what's presently before you.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
Next item, item 13.
Item 13 is Resolution 2024-255, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a First Amendment to the memorandum of agreement with, for an automated transit network investigation and implementation study by and between the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority, Fulton County, Clayton County, City of College Park, Airport South Community Improvement District, and the Airport West Community Improvement District, to authorize the chairman to execute any documents relating thereto and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Uh, yes. Have we answered any of the questions that were asked at our last meeting regarding how this benefits Clayton County?
Ms. LaRosa.
How does this benefit Clayton County residents? How much does Clayton County have to pay into this?
My name is Crystal Harris. I'm the Program Director for the ATL Airport Community Improvement Districts, and I will take the first question with regard to how this will benefit the citizens of Clayton County. Back in 2019, the CID's completed a study, a transit feasibility study, to look at the challenges of transit in South Metro. One of the things that we noticed is that there were a lot of transit deserts and disconnects with how transit flowed through South Metro, south of the airport, in addition to first-and-last-mile issues. Our study recommended three recommendations to pilot in order to provide options for Marta to look at expanding the transit network. The Automated Transit Network System was one of them. With this pilot that we will construct down at GICC, the citizens will have an opportunity to actually experience this technology, come and ride it, learn about it, ask questions, and meet with the actual vendors that develop this technology. We want to make sure that everyone is aware of what it is, they're comfortable with what it is, and that they know that it's safe. But this is something that we know will provide an additional option outside of fixed route bus systems, heavy rail, as well as bus rapid transit. This system will allow transit to come further into the neighborhoods and not just on a linear system.
Are you open for questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you mentioned the GICC building. If I recall, the last meeting, we discussed, why would Clayton County residents go to the airport to get to GICC building when we can just drive up Riverdale Road and be there?
Well, this site is just to pilot the actual technology. This is not a permanent location for the system, it's a place where we would start and then expand it. We did work with the City of College Park, and they actually recommended that site to put this system because it's something that they would potentially keep if we didn't move forward with it. But it's not something that is to serve Clayton County and to serve residents to get to the airport, it's simply a location to pilot the technology and give the citizens an opportunity to come and ride it and learn more about it.
Okay, so now how does that benefit our residents?
The, it's a free system, it'll be free for two years, so at any point in time, the school systems, we want the colleges to come up there, we want everyone to come and learn about this technology, because during the expansion, it gives an opportunity to create additional jobs. There's an operations center that will be coming along with this technology as well, so there's a benefit beyond just expanding transit. It really opens opportunities to the citizens in South Metro, especially in Clayton County.
Okay, where in Clayton would this be?
We will work very closely with the commission, which is why we are asking that you all sign this MOA, because we want to make sure that this system goes where it's necessary within the county of Clayton, sorry about that. But we want to make sure that, again, it's connecting into areas for economic development opportunity, but serving the citizens that are currently disconnected from transit right now.
So we don't know right now, but we want to sign an agreement that it could possibly happen.
The agreement is for the pilot to be constructed so we can actually get data from the system. Marta will be conducting a feasibility study alongside this pilot running live in order to feed data into the feasibility study. A pilot is simply to give us information, again, to test the viability of it, let the citizens know what this is, make sure that it's safe before it's something that we expand.
And how much is Clayton being asked to put into this financially?
I'm gonna turn this over to Marta.
Good evening, and thank you so much for your time. Chairman Turner and Commissioner Reeves, Hamrick Davis, we really do appreciate the time to answer these questions. I will answer the funding question first, and I do want to add a little bit about the benefits to the citizens of Clayton. So, we have a little graphic here, we'll send you guys out so you can see it, but, so the Clayton sales tax is collected, and then we have the core penny collected. That all gets sent to the Department of Revenue, then to the bond trustee where the debt service is taken out, that allows us to keep a AAA bond rating, so we're very competitive for federal funding. And then comes to Marta. When it comes to us, we split that back out with some reporting from Department of Revenue. 50% of your sales tax goes to your Clayton operations, the other 50% goes to the capital programs, as you all know. This is gonna come out of the core penny, state of good repair, so Clayton is not paying for this, it's in a Fulton area, it's gonna be their project. We're really trying to get your buy-in and support because we're trying to be very inclusive because this particular project, as Crystal mentioned, is a pilot program. There is gonna be a feasibility study that does possibly have implication to use this mode in other places, and that's something that you guys would certainly be able to see firsthand, if it might be something you can use in Clayton, or if they expand it around that airport area, then we might see some of those areas in Clayton be touched. So we want you to be a part of this as early as possible and have a seat at the table and conversations with those on it.
Now, this about, I thought we had one penny that was active, but the other penny was somewhere in a savings, so now you're using the penny?
It's a half.
No, ma'am. So it's one penny, and yours is split in half, half of it for operations, half of it for capital, and it doesn't touch the state of good repair core penny that this is coming from.
But it benefits Fulton now, is that correct?
The pilot program will be in Fulton County, yes.
Now, the, the test area is Phoenix Boulevard, correct?
Yeah.
The test area, again, is gonna be on the GICC campus, it's gonna connect from the Skytrain, it's gonna stop where they recently are constructing the pedestrian bridge, and then over to the arena. It's partly in Clayton County, because a part of that campus is in Clayton County, but again, the system is going to be open to everyone, it will be free to ride for anyone that wants to come and experience it.
But there is a small portion of that that's in Clayton County.
Correct.
Chairman?
Yes.
My question, from a monitoring, the progress and reporting standpoint, and also project, management of this project, who's managing this project?
That's a great question. So the CID's are taking the lead on managing the project, however, because Marta is contributing the funding for the project, Marta is also on the team, there are stipulations set up within the MOA to make sure that they clear a certain aspect of design, it's acceptable to Marta before they're even paid the funds for the project.
Okay, well, any of the, will any of the elected officials from any of the municipalities be included?
Yeah, so a part of the MOA, you all are a part of the Project Governance Committee. Even when selecting the team, the Project Governance Committee had a final say in who got selected for the team, so things were still run through the Project Governance Committee, that is spelled out in the MOA.
And those jurisdictions signed off already.
Exactly.
And as far as, and I think you might have answered this already, I apologize if it's repetitive, the progress, the progress in reporting, how's that going to go? Is it just one at the end? Will there be periodic updates of how this is going?
There's five phases broken out in the actual MOA itself, and within the first phase, being the design phase, there's gonna be milestones throughout that entire phase for design.
Great, thank you.
I have another question regarding the funding. You said Marta is funding this?
Partly. We are putting in part of that funding, and that is coming out of that state of good repair of the core penny, not Clayton, and then part of it is gonna be funded privately by the entity chosen as the vendor to do the pilot program.
Can you name the vendor?
Yeah, so the team itself is known as the Atlanta Personal Rapid Transit Solutions Team, but the technology provider is GlideWays, they're out of California.
Say that again?
GlideWays, they are out of California.
Familiar. Any other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves.
Can you talk about how this, is this project comparable to the Marta Reach project that was helped with the additional, like, last mile transportation around Fort Gillum? Like, could potentially the personal rapid transit be used in the future in Clayton County for kind of like last mile personal rapid transit?
Absolutely. Again, it's a part of the feasibility study, looking at what makes sense financially, what makes sense location-wise, it absolutely can be a first mile, last mile solution. That particular program was a microtransit program, but this Automated Transit Network could be seen as the same.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Nay.
Three, one, it passes. Madam Clerk, thank you, Ms. Crystal, and team. That's it? Okay, all right. Mr. Reed, is there a need for executive session?
Personnel, real estate, and litigation.
Is there a motion to go into executive session for personnel, litigation, and real estate?
So move.
Second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It is unanimous. Thank you. Everybody have a good evening. All right, motion to reconvene.
So moved.
I'll second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It is unanimous. Mr. Reed.
All right, you want to do them all together?
Yes, please.
Okay, the first is the purchase of property at Zero Geneva Street in Atlanta, Georgia, in the amount of $58,000, I'm sorry, $59,161.93. The second is purchase of property at Zero Blaylock Street in Hapeville, excuse me, Hapeville, Georgia, in the amount of $147,428.47. Next is approval of a settlement agreement related to civil service matter and the matter of LaShonda Baker and Levon Allen and his capacity, official capacity as sheriff of Clayton County, and that is in the amount of $75,000. The next is a settlement agreement...
Second.
Any question on any of the items? Here or none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous. All right, Mr. Merkis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. On behalf of the Office of the Chief Operating Officer, I bring before you tonight a request to appoint Marty Fox as Interim Director of Building and Maintenance. We're asking the appointment to be at a grade thirty-eight, step nine, with a base salary of one twenty-five, three forty. Cost total with benefits, all-inclusive, will be one sixty-nine, eight, seventy-nine.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous. Congratulations.
Good evening, board. This request is on behalf of the Staff Attorney's Office. This is to bring in a new employee at the staff attorney level at an elevated rate due to experience. The proposed salary will be, the proposed cost is one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three ninety-five. This will be an in lieu of position of a senior level, which will actually be a cost savings of forty thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars.
And the employee's name is Charleston Williamson, and if you ask, that it'll be retroactive to yesterday, because it started yesterday.
Okay. Started yesterday. I guess we better approve it, is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second the motion, any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous. All right, Mr. Merkis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. On behalf of the Office of the Chief Operating Officer, I bring before you tonight a request to appoint Marty Fox as Interim Director of Building and Maintenance. We're asking the appointment to be at a grade thirty-eight, step nine, with a base salary of one twenty-five, three forty. Cost total with benefits, all-inclusive, will be one sixty-nine, eight, seventy-nine.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous. Congratulations.
Good evening, board. This request is on behalf of the Staff Attorney's Office. This is to bring in a new employee at the staff attorney level at an elevated rate due to experience. The proposed salary will be, the proposed cost is one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three ninety-five. This will be an in lieu of position of a senior level, which will actually be a cost savings of forty thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars.
And the employee's name is Charleston Williamson, and if you ask, that it'll be retroactive to yesterday, because it started yesterday.
Okay. Started yesterday. I guess we better approve it, is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second the motion, any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. All right, no other business before this board, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous.